On the agenda, we're going to be moving that until a little bit later in the evening. At 7:10, we had a request. We had a request from Captain Ed Sullivan, the Massachusetts Field Representative from the National World War II Memorial Committee, to celebrate and honor Mrs. Myra Kraft this evening. That is scheduled from 7:10 to 7:40. At 7:40, Select Woman Lorraine Brew and Police Chief O'Leary will review revisions to the regulations. At 8:15, we have scheduled Randy Scollins and Roger Hill to talk about the solid waste collection and program, solid waste collection program changes. At 8:45 was a topic called James Toronto Manager of Toby Keith's. That has been canceled. At 9 o'clock, we have an executive session, negotiations, non-union bargaining, not to come back into open session. And in between there, we'll do action items. And I'll note for the public's record that on our agenda for the action items, there was a typographical error that said Board of Selectmen Action Items for January 31st. They're actually for tonight. It was brought to the town clerk's attention, I guess, on Friday, and it was corrected. And so it is a, it will be fine for this evening. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Linda to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll move the citizens' input until after the Captain Sullivan ceremony. So since we have a few minutes before that starts, I'd like to start with the action items. The first item is a petition for joint poll relocation on Payson Road from Paul Schneider, Verizon.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second discussion.
I just think we have to note that it's poll number 25. I think, just for the record, we have to say that it's poll 25.
So the motion is to relocate poll number 25. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes.
And that's correct for the second?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We have a request from Michael Johns, our Veterans Service Officer, to accept a donation of $105 to the Veterans Gift Fund from the Town Hall staff in memory of Arthur Watson.
Make a motion to accept it with gratitude?
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We also have a request from Michael Johns, Veterans Services Officer, for the appointment of Robert Seitman to serve on the Crossroads Veterans Services Board for a term expiring on May 1st, 2013.
I'm, I, so moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I'll ask Randy if he'd come forward. He has a request for an authorization on Foxborough refunding refinancing bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. This is really a housekeeping vote that we're asking for. We have an opportunity to refinance a few of the town's outstanding bonds, given the very favorable municipal bond market at this point in time. And that would, could potentially save us, given the current rates, about a million dollars in interest costs over the life of the remaining bonds, which would help primarily the tax-excluded debt, which would be a direct pass-through to taxpayers and water rate payers as well. There's a formal vote that we would ask the board to take. And all, just to be clear, all this formal vote asked the board to do is authorize the treasurer to go forward, to prepare the prospectus and solicit the bids, as we would with any bond sale. We would come back to the board with the bids, the low bids, and the board would either choose to take action, accept a low bid, or take no action at all. So this is only allowing us to proceed with the process.
Okay. Any discussions from anybody? Okay, Randy does have a suggested motion here. Does someone want to make it?
I'll make it. That in order to save interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of bonds under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21A, to refund all or any portion of the remaining principal of in redemption premium and interest on the town's general obligation bonds dated June 15th, 2000, October 1st, 2002, June 15th, 2004, and June 15th, 2005. And that for this purpose, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the preparation and distribution of a preliminarily official statement, provided, however, that no bond shall be issued under this vote unless and until the final interest rates and other terms of the refunding bond are approved by this board.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Randy, you wanted to make one other comment?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a friendly reminder to all our taxpayers out there, the third quarter tax bills, tax bills are due by February 1st.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sandy.
Okay, the next item is a request for three one-day beer and wine licenses for comedy nights to be held on January 27th, February 17th, and March 16th, 2012, at the Orpheum Theater. Request by Bill Cunningham.
It's pretty much regular that we approve these, so I would approve this as read.
You move to approve all three dates?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a request from the town clerk for the Board of Selectmen vote to add housing authority on the May ballot.
It's as simple as that, isn't it?
Yep.
This was, um, this was due to the passing of Harold Donnelly. It was supposed to be done last year, so it really needs to be placed. They may, at some point before May, even come forward with a representative, that would have to be a joint vote between the board and their organization, for someone to fill in temporarily, but we haven't heard from them yet.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to add the housing authority to the May ballot.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We then have, from the Board of Selectmen, a warrant for the presidential primary elections to be held March 6th, 2012, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the John J. Ahern Middle School.
I move that we approve the warrant for presidential primary elections to be held March 6th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the John J. Middle School.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Being at approximately 7:08, we'll get ready to welcome our guests. For those at home, this is a formal ceremony that has been done across the United States many, many times by the World War II Memorial Committee. And they've been working with Sandy. I want to thank her publicly for all the work she's done coordinating with them the evening.
Chairman Harrington, the Massachusetts National World War II Memorial Commission, request permission to enter.
Mr. Dean of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, please enter.
the Chairman of the Massachusetts World War II Memorial Committee, I bid you greetings from the committee, and also greatly appreciate the valuable time on your calendar, so that we can lay aside this evening, an evening to honor Mrs. Myra Hyatt Kraft. I'd like now to introduce the Honorary Chairman of our committee, Captain Tom Hudner, who has some brief opening remarks. Captain Hudner?
Thank you.
Please be seated, Board.
Mr. Chairman and the honorable members of the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the Massachusetts World War II Memorial Committee, I want to thank you for the opportunity this evening to honor a truly great citizen, Mrs. Myra Kraft. It is traditional for our committee to honor those who have made great contributions to preserve our American way of life. Through her charitable work on the home front of Massachusetts, Myra Kraft went far beyond the call of duty in an unprecedented effort to help those less fortunate. It is worthy for all of us to come out of our homes on a cold New England evening to pay our due respects to Mrs. Myra Kraft. Chairman Harrington, I present our proclamation chairman, Sheriff Peter Flynn, former president of the Massachusetts Sheriff's Association.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hudner, and Mr. Kraft, family members, Mr. Harrington, the members of your board, citizens that are gathered here tonight. It's my privilege to serve as Chairman and Proclamation Committee. Whereas the Massachusetts National World War II Memorial Committee, under its duty prescribed by its Chairman Emeritus, the Honorable John Joseph Mowgli, to promote patriotism in our communities and recognize those who have gone before us, who preserved our American way of life, hence, after a thorough analysis of contributions to our communities, we determine Mrs. Myra Hyatt Kraft a national role model for American women for her tireless giving through charitable works. Pat Lawton, former Chairman of the County Commissioners in Plymouth County, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt, as her father's daughter, witnessed firsthand during her childhood in Worcester, Mass., one of the greatest examples of philanthropic giving in the history of the Commonwealth, by her father, Jacob Hyatt.
Walter Parker of Foxborough, what do ye say about Myra Kraft?
I'm wanting to be here tonight, and I'm having some voice problems, so my niece has been to the, uh, the, uh...
Thank you.
Whereas Myra Hyatt endured childhood with the knowledge of losing her grandfather and grandmother in Lithuania, along with her great aunts and uncles due to the Nazi Holocaust, thus dedicating her life to a duty to remember the stories of the Holocaust and to teach tolerance in society.
Georgia Hudner of Concord, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt, raised in the philanthropic legacy of Jacob Hyatt, emulated her beloved father, and at age five, visiting the displaced and less fortunate in European camps, recognizing early in life the historical impact of the World War II camps.
Roberta Parker of Foxborough, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt, daughter of one of the early visionary leaders of Brandeis University, journeyed to Israel in 1948 to assist the less fortunate at the dawn of the creation of Israel.
Cindy Thorpe of Mansfield, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas student Myra Hyatt Kraft, author of the play North Atlantic, which gave recognition to our coastal community that contributed to preserve our freedom in World War II.
James Clinton of Mansfield, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas the Jerusalem Post records that Myra Hyatt, as a child, went door-to-door raising money for the poor children of Palestine into the darkness of night, at great concern to her mother, yet returning home with a sack of money for the children of Palestine.
Kara Griffin of the Chamber of Commerce, what say ye about Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt married Robert Kraft in June of 1963, and the union being blessed with four sons, Jonathan, Daniel, Josh, and David Kraft, making great contributions to the community life in Brookline, the local tri-town communities, and throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Bruce Roberts of Foxborough, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Kraft personally staffed home banks for fundraising drives for the less fortunate, when they caused needed financial boost.
Jack Othlet of Foxborough, the town historian, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt Kraft, as a leader of charitable organizations, although petite and frail, has the courage of a lion in her quest to show by example the importance of reaching out to those in need and to teach tolerance in our society.
Pam Goodman of Mansfield, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt Kraft served on the Board of Brandeis University for the Boston Foundation and the United Way of Massachusetts Bay, exhibiting a tireless effort to education in those in need.
Sandy Clinton of Mansfield, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt Kraft, the board of Brigham and Women's Hospital in the American Repertory Theater, giving tirelessly, tirelessly to medical care and the importance of art and theater to society.
Bob Simon, Chairman of the Foxborough Veterans, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt Kraft served on the American Jewish Joint Distribution Committee, facing history and ourselves, a Holocaust education organization, thus enhancing valuable knowledge of Jewish history.
Greg DeSimon of Mansfield, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Myra Hyatt Kraft, as President of the Kraft Family Foundation and the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation, under her leadership, have given in unprecedented fashion to the needs of medical, educational, arts, educational organizations, along with youth sports, Catholic schools, and at-risk children.
Jack Sullivan of Plymouth, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Cardinal Sean O'Malley of Boston declared Myra Hyatt Kraft a strong advocate for serving the less fortunate and a great supporter of Catholic charities, giving dedicated support and commitment to serve others in need.
Tim Cuneely of Foxborough, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas Michael Durkin, CEO of United Way of Massachusetts Bay, declared, "Through great vision, Myra Hyatt Kraft insisted that nonprofits be the best and do the best."
David Flynn, former Dean of the House from Bridgewater, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas the Boston Globe has declared that Myra Hyatt Kraft has forged a whole-new form of engaged giving, and whereas the International Health Tribune declared that Myra Hyatt Kraft is modelled a new form of engaged giving that is transforming the relationship between philanthropists and philanthropy.
Kevin Weinfeld of Foxborough, what say ye of Myra Kraft?
Whereas the Jewish Community Relations Council has declared that Myra Hyatt Kraft has embodied the Jewish values of Siddhartha and social justice through her charitable efforts on behalf of the Jewish community and the people of greater Boston, further declaring that Myra Hyatt Kraft is a woman with great integrity and passion, who saw challenges as opportunities, making a difference in the lives of the people she met.
Whereas the Massachusetts National World War II Memorial Committee, under the prescribed duty of its Chairman Emeritus, John Joseph Mowgli, recognizes Myra Hyatt Kraft for her unprecedented leadership in our Commonwealth, thus hereby declare her a guardian to the hall of patriotic heroes in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Therefore, be it resolved that the Massachusetts National World War II Memorial Committee hereby declares, on behalf of the citizens of the State of Massachusetts, recognizing Mrs. Myra Hyatt Kraft as a national role model for women, for all she has done and her tremendous contributions to assist the less fortunate through her legacy of charitable work. We submit this with great honor to the Foxborough Board of Selectmen on the 24th day of January in this year, 2012. This time, I'd like to introduce a tireless worker. He was appointed by Congressman Mowgli as Chairman of the World War II Memorial Commission here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and he has carried out with great dignity and also lots of energy his responsibilities and duties. Ed Sullivan.
Good evening, and thank you for all turning out on a January night that is actually, we're blessed with a little balmy weather. It's January and it's cold to come out in Massachusetts, and Myra Kraft is a worthy citizen for us to come together and come out in honor tonight. I just want to open and convey to Mr. Kraft and members of the Kraft family our deep condolences and great appreciation to be joining us. I know it's difficult sometimes to endure through a lot of well-intentioned sentiments, but I would like to convey that we have our Commander in Chief down in Washington, who tells all of us that we're going through a rough patch in this time period of our country. And great Americans like Myra Kraft are something fabric in the society that we can hold on to. So in essence, our committee is memorializing the memory of Myra Kraft for our own self-interest, so that we, as a community, can come together and have something to hold on to, a fabric that can help us get through that rough patch and get on to the business of our lives. Us, the survivors, we all have to move on and go and do our duty in life. And as citizens of Massachusetts, every one of us here are members of the Massachusetts World War II Memorial Committee. We are the purveyors of American history. It's our duty to recall those that have gone before us, that have made great contributions to society. It's easy to lay at home on the couch and eat fudge and watch TV. It's not easy after work to come down here, pay respect to the Board of Selectmen for their time and their voluntary service, and come out and do our part. It's our duty, our fiduciary duty, to come out, and I honor all of you for being here tonight. Now, you've heard from the citizens about some of the wonderful highlights of Myra Kraft's life, and of what I've read as a historian with the National Maritime Union and the appointee by Joe Mowgli to the committee. I put together a storyboard to bring out not only the significance of Myra Kraft's contributions on the home frontier, but also a historical analysis of others. Because of what we read about Myra Kraft is the fact that she's always given credit to others. She would always do and give, but she would always give credit to others. So instead of singularly on Myra, I think she would appreciate the fact that we remember some of the other great Americans. So the committee's put together a storyboard on Myra Kraft, what we consider a hall of patriotic heroes, a short snippet, some of the people me and Captain Hudner recognize as executive committee members on our committee, the two end pieces. But I'd just like to briefly highlight and begin with Crispus Atticus, the true patriot. Crispus Atticus did something very, very special in Boston, and Peter, I need this prop. Now, I want to tell you, as in a story, and Crispus Atticus is here with a rifle. But the real truth down there in, by Boston Common, was Crispus Atticus was a runaway slave, a fisherman. He was out in Western Mass., and he didn't like his slaveholder to keep him during snowstorms, chained up in the goat shed out behind the house. He was shivering every night. None of us would like that. So he ran away, and he went down there and tuckered and did some whaling on the whaling ships. He shows up in Boston in a beautiful buckskin suit and his New England Patriot blue wool sweater to keep him warm. And he's a little cantankerous, and he's saying down at, by Faneuil Hall, "Everybody's barking about the British." And Crispus Atticus got up after a few drinks, and he tapped his big stick, and he says, "Do you want to fight?" And everybody said, "Yeah, we want to fight." Well, let's give them a fight. So they marched down King Street, and Crispus Atticus led the way with all of that anger, because he understood the British wanted to come over us, give us taxes, and do all these things, and he wanted to fight. He was tired of slavery. The very best patriots were the African-Americans. They had nothing to lose. They wanted to fight. They were tired of being slaves. They finally get their freedom from slavery, and the British want to come in and encompass them and give them some more slavery, you know? So he leads the fight down King Street, and we have the Boston massacre. Crispus Atticus just marched right into them, and they shot him and killed him. So what did Sam Adams do? He says, "Get that man with a blue Patriot sweater and the buckskin suit, and we're laying him out at Faneuil Hall." For four days, he laid there, the first New England Patriot, laid there, and they put him out there for a purpose. So the British, and everyone could see that we were going to fight, we were willing to die for our freedom, and this is where our New England Patriot tradition began. I'm familiar with New England Patriot tradition. My father took me to Nickerson Field that first day, that night game up there, and the Denver Broncos come in and beat us up. But that tradition began with Crispus Atticus. He would have made a great linebacker. He was going right into the crowd. Now Myra's surrounded by the revolutionaries and then the contemporaries, but we have some very significant fellows here, Peter Salem and Samuel Poor. A lot of people get them confused, but these fellows both fought in the Battle of Bunker Hill. And what is absolutely incredible, and so demoralizing to the British, was that Samuel Poor killed Major Pitcon of the British Army. And Peter Salem killed in battle Lieutenant Colonel Pitcon. And the British were so, they had an etiquette about fighting. We were shooting behind trees and rocks and bushes. These guys were African-American slaves that killed their leaders in battle, and that was the most demoralizing thing. These two men were honored at the State House, unheard of for an African-American, but their names were recorded. They were the essence of the beginning of the New England Patriots. Now beside her, I grew up in her cow pastures, Abigail Adams, the wife of our second president, the mother of a president, and she stood for the home front. She ran the farm, she did all the work, she milked the cows. She, like Myra Kraft, was the essence of the household. She was the giver, the do-gooder. Her husband was off in business and politics, and they stand together and are all the heroes as the beginning of our country. Now down below, our contemporaries, that me and Mr. Hudner were on the executive committee with, I have a very exceptional story to share with you folks. I was called to Congressman Mowgli's office, and he says, "I have a very special assignment for you. I have three men that I want you to go and personally invite to my table of honor at Joe Teshy's restaurant for our fundraiser, where we raised a couple million dollars. I was in charge of working with 49 state chairmen throughout our country to raise $100 million to build the National World War II Memorial. I want you, Eddie, to go out and invite these fellows to my table of honor at Joe Teshy's." Yes, Joe, whatever you say. So I have the, the... So, I have the duty and the honor to go out and see these three fellows. Now, the first guy I go to was out in Andover, Captain George Street. And whenever I tell the story of Captain George Street, I correlate it with a fellow named Bob Kraft, because although they were in totally different worlds, he did something extraordinary. For all of us that grew up in the Boston area, we loved the Patriots, even though they had some tough years, but we have to be eternally grateful to Bob Kraft for being a very good, astute businessman. And James Orthwine wanted to take this team out of town, and he took a risk, a chance. He was bold and creative, and he kept that team here. He stuck himself out for all of us that live here. Our New England pride, our Patriot pride, was going to go out to St. Louis, and we're eternally thankful for his business acumen and his willingness to stick his neck out and take a risk and make an offer. And thank God, he had the business acumen to make them, keep them here. Now, how does that correlate to Captain Street? Captain Street was a submarine commander out in the Pacific, and I'm ordered by Joe Mochley to go out and invite him to his table. So, I go into his living room. Can you believe a U.S. Naval Annapolis grad sitting in his living room with a button-down sweater and a tie in the afternoon, asking me if I want tea with his wife, a little tea set? I can't, I can't get him to stop telling me how grateful he is of me being the volunteer for the Memorial Committee. I said, "Captain Street, I'm here to honor you. You keep honoring me." And he tells me a story about, he had to be a little bold. He had to step out and do something because, you know what? We had to come up with some gumption and fight back for what the Japanese did in Pearl Harbor. He said, "We had to stand up as men and do something." And I said, "You know, how in the world did you come up with the idea with just a few torpedoes left to go into that Seju Harbor in Korea and take out the whole oil terminal, take out the whole fleet of Japanese in the wee hours of the morning?" He goes in above the water, all patrol boats around and everything. He hits a frigate, blows it up, hits the oil terminal, blows it up. He blows the whole city up. He's running out of fuel, he's only got a couple of torpedoes. He's taking a risk. He's taking a high-leverage risk, and they chased him out with the patrol boats. He stayed up above the water to get out fast. He blew them all, he'd made major, major damage in the Pacific on the Japanese fleet. He took a risk for us, for our freedom, and to give it back to those Japanese for killing our 2,000 people in Pearl Harbor, and we're eternally grateful for that. Now, I leave his house, and he's committed to be at Joe Mochley's table, and I go home to Plymouth, and I'm relaxing with my kids, and I get up and read the Boston Herald, and Captain Hudner died, uh, Captain Street died. Captain Hudner's with us right here. I'm getting to Captain Hudner in a minute. So, I said, "My God," you know, I said, "this is, I, I'm just, it was the last people." I called his wife, and she said, "You're one of the last people to speak to him." You know, and I was really thinking, it really impacted me, you know, and he's not going to make it to Joe Mochley's table. So, I go down to Brockton Hospital, Brockton VA, because then Braintree, my father's, one of his best friends, Charlie McGilvery, is at, I find out, is at the VA Hospital. And it's the duty nurse, and Charlie's there in the bed, and I said, "Charlie, Joe Mochley wants you to be at his table of honor." And he says, "Nurse, get, have my suit pressed. Order my car from the Ancient and Honorables. Captain Sullivan's here." And I had just got back from Maine. I went up to Maine to Captain Arthur Moore, who wrote the book about the World War II participation of the Merchant Marine, A Careless Word and Needless Sinking. And I had every, every member of my committee at Buzzards Bay Merchant Marine Veterans sign that book, and then I drove up to the author of the book, a citizen, a volunteer. The United States government did not write down the highest casualties in World War II with the Merchant Marine, in which nobody knows that Charlie McGilvery was a Merchant Marine. And I had the author of the book, Captain Moore, sign the book, and I said, "Captain Moore, Joe Mochley wants you at his table." And he says, "Would you please tell Joe, I can't make it because I'm busy dying. He wasn't feeling good." So, I get out of Boston, I go to Brockton, I meet with Charlie, have this wonderful, I said, "You know, I got this book, and it's signed for you by Captain Moore." So, the nurse comes in, takes our picture, and Charlie's missing his left arm. He drops it on the floor. And he says, "Jeez, there's so many of those guys died, they had to make the book real big." You know, and I'm going, "What a way to look at it," you know? So, I picked the book up, we get the picture with him and everything, and the nurse, we have a wonderful meeting, and he's saying, you know, he's ordering his uniform to be pressed. He's going to be at the table of honor. And it was just a wonderful experience, and I'm going out the hall, and she says, "You know, you might want to meet this fellow down the hall." And I says, "Oh, who's that?" And he says, "Ernest Wilkins from Randolph." Now, Ernest Wilkins from Randolph gives us a tremendous window into Dory Miller. Every single African-American I've ever spoken to, and I've spoken and sailed on ships with an awful lot of African-Americans, I have never met an African-American or anybody. When I say, "Do you know Dory Miller?", and they just look at me, "Yeah, I think I do," you know? Dory Miller was a very significant person in World War II, and Ernest Wilkins, his shipmate from Randolph, gave us a wonderful insight. Now, Ernest is in bed curled up in a ball with no teeth, and he's mumbling. And I have a long conversation with Ernest, and they come in and they said, "If you want him at the dinner, we're going to order him teeth, and we're going to get him a soup." Now, Ernest ended up making a great speech up at Joe Teshy's, and he gives us a tremendous insight into the fact that their fathers were slaves. They picked cotton, and they were sitting on, in the dirt on the side of the road and reading the newspaper that if you went in the Navy, you got three square meals and you got shoes, new shoes. So, they joined the Navy, and they ended up in Pearl Harbor. And he's eyewitness. This man was a fullback in Waco, Texas, a star. He could have gone to college. He decided to, he didn't like what happened at Pearl Harbor, you know, he was, he wanted to go in the Navy. So, he was there, unfortunately, on the ship when it got attacked, and this is the significance of his entry in the, in the hall. And it all comes back to Myra Kraft being a part of this great heritage that we have in our country of making great contributions. Because Dory Miller was in the stewards' department. Because when the ship got attacked in Pearl Harbor, it was illegal for African-Americans, people of color, to have arms. It wasn't until after Dory Miller's bravery that that changed with the War Department. They had a cluster problem on their hands at the Pentagon. Because Dory Miller, before he did his bravery, he went up and saved the captain of the ship who was wounded. He carried him to a hospital. Then he came on the ship. Then he grabbed that machine gun, breaking the, black man wasn't supposed to be shooting the guns. He grabbed that machine gun, and he shot down Japanese aircraft. Now, Ernest Wilkins was there. He saw the interview with the War Department. Guess how many planes the African-Americans on the ship testified that Dory Miller shot down? African-Americans reported nine planes shot down. When they interviewed the white sailors on the ship, they said seven. He shot down seven aircraft. The War Department gave him the Naval Cross for shooting down two planes. Now, that's not the significance. The significance is the law changed, and that's the significance of him being in our Hall of Heroes. And Ernest Wilkins from Randolph gave us that window, a better understanding, and we're very appreciative of that. We just lost Ernest Wilkins this year in 2011. Now, we're onto Charlie McGilvery, and he was a very unique fellow here in Massachusetts. Charlie McGilvery had come in on a merchant ship as a Merchant Marine, and I'm talking to him in the hospital, and he's saying, "Eddie, don't be calling me a hero." I was scared stiff. When we were coming into Boston Harbor, they shot a torpedo by the stern, and they just missed us. It was the second time my ship was missed, and I had it. All my friends, the German U-boats, they were dominating the Atlantic. We were in really bad trouble. They controlled the Atlantic seaboard, and one in seven ships were getting through. And he was, he told me he was scared. And I said, "Charlie, don't tell me that. You know, I've known you my whole life. The Hallerins are here tonight, Major Jim Halleran, the State Police, my father, Joe Mochley, and Charlie McGilvery. They all hung out at Joe Mochley's father's pub up in Scully Square. As a little boy, I had to sit in the stool and drink 100 Cokes while they were drinking a lot of liquor, and I had to hear all the stories. And now, late in my life, after I have five children, I'm sitting with Charlie McGilvery in the VA Hospital, and he's telling me he wasn't brave, he was, you know, he's scared." So, he ran as fast as he could down the South Boston waterfront, and he ran in and signed up in the U.S. Army because he wanted to get away from this threat of those German U-boats. And guess where they sent him? His first assignment, the Battle of the Bulge. And Charlie ran up that hill, and somehow he got through, and not only did he make it up the hill, but they spent weeks going up into the Argonne, way up into France to liberate France. And guess what happens? January 1st, for a whole week, they're pinned down in the bottom of the forest, laying in the stomachs in the snow. And this is a guy, you would say, "What was he like?" Well, he had the speed of Wes Walker. He had the accuracy and the arm of Tom Brady. He could shoot a gnat 10,000 feet away, you know, and he was just the most prolific athlete, and he was nimble, and he was tough, and he was second in command. He was sergeant. His lieutenant's beside him, they're pinned down for a week, they're freezing to death in the snow, and the Germans are yelling out, "If you give up, we're going to give you turkey and a hot blanket," and, you know? All of a sudden, a sniper hits the lieutenant, kills the lieutenant. Charlie's in charge. He says, "Okay, anybody that wants that turkey and the blanket, guess what? I'm going to give you a lead pill in the back of the head because we're not giving up. We didn't come here to give up. We came here to fight. Now, all of you guys, it's a direct order. You cover me. I'm going up that hill." Charlie McGilvery said, "Cover me." And with the speed of Wes Walker, he zigzagged behind the trees and up that hill, and Charlie McGilvery, one by one, every machine gun, he jumped, in one group, he jumped in the middle of the pit because they were on him, and he shot them, picked up the guy's gun, and shot the rest of them. Charlie McGilvery killed 36 Germans by himself while his whole platoon was laying in the snow. They were ordered to protect him, to get up there. He craftily just came boom, 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 boom. The very last German turned around with the machine gun and shot Charlie's left arm off, and thank God, he fell into the snow, and it froze his arm. They tied him on a jeep, and he made it. He was ordered by James Michael Curley to come into the State House, and they brought him down to President Truman, and they gave him the Congressional Medal of Honor. Charlie McGilvery's in our Hall of Heroes because he went on the Call of Duty. Charlie McGilvery was somebody that made great contributions in Boston as a Treasury Agent, and he was on our executive committee with Captain Street and Tom Hudner, and I was a field representative. Now, there was one more name in that list, that was Captain Tom Hudner. And I hadn't, I had an appointment with Mr. Hudner, I called him on the phone. But before I did that, I went over to Anthony Athanas, and Anthony's P. of Four, and I said, "Anthony, can I use your phone? I got to call Joe Mochley, I'm very upset." Because I just looked in the Boston Herald, and Charlie McGilvery died right after I visited him at the Brockton VA. And I said, "Joe." He says, "What is it, Eddie?" I said, "Listen, don't give me any more slips of paper with guys' names on it." He said, "What are you talking about?" I says, "Jesus, I went over and saw Captain Street, I go over, I go down to Brockton VA, I see Charlie. I said, "I'm scared to go over and see Captain Hudner." And he says, "Well, for Christ's sake," he goes, "You know what? You're not coming over the house very soon, I can tell you that right now." And I said, "Joe, you don't have any more slips of paper, right?" I see, he says, "No." Okay. And what the wonderful, you know, experience for me is Captain Tom Hudner looked me in the eye at the Old North Church when doing an interfaith service for all of our heroes, and Tom Hudner says, "You know, Eddie, your pay as a volunteer is that you were the one chosen to be the last person to say goodbye to these fellows." And I never thought of it like that. Captain Hudner helped to crystallize it for me. So, the reason why we give of ourselves and we come out on cold nights and we honor these great Americans is that it's our duty, they're worthy of it, and, you know, it gives us a fabric to hold on when we're in tough times. We're in a tough period right now, and I contend to all of you that by memorializing and remembering Myra Kraft and what she did is an opportunity for all of us to band together and use that fabric to bring ourselves forward into a more productive society. We're the ones living, we have to go on. And for the Kraft family, you know, for us to, to bring out Myra with all the respect that we can muster because of her great contributions, it's a very, very worthy event to bring out her importance in our life because she rewrote the relationship between philanthropy and philanthropists. She was so prolific in giving and charitable works that we will never, ever see anybody so prolific in our lives. It would be very difficult for any of us to ever achieve the amount of giving. And when we measured contributions to society, we can clearly say that Mrs. Myra Kraft truly is a national role model for women. Because just that one accomplishment of being the president of the combined Jewish philanthropies is a phenomenal accomplishment. And we are very, very thankful, appreciative, and fortunate to have her in the state of Massachusetts. And it's very important for us to leave here tonight with a positive attitude. My job is to instill patriotism in the communities prescribed by Joe Mochley. My job is to say to all of you, "No, let's not go home depressed. We got to pull ourselves up by the bootstraps. We know that there's difficult times, we're in one right now." And the example that Myra Kraft gave us is for all of us to come together and it helped to make our community a better place to be and all of us to be better people. And when, you know, when we measure contributions to society, she certainly is above and beyond the Call of Duty. So, in saying that, I would like to think that we've highlighted Myra but not leave her alone. To cover, she would want us to talk about other great Americans and put her in the context of being a warrior on the home front, that made contributions, that made our life a better place to be here in Massachusetts. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time you've given, and I realize we have a couple of agenda items, and I'd like to confer to you on, I believe from the secretary, you have an agenda item on a proclamation?
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Jack Offalet for helping us write a proclamation. I'd like to ask Mr. Sullivan, our clerk, to read that to the community.
Thank you, Larry. On behalf of the people of Foxborough, we are proud to join with the Massachusetts National World War II Memorial Committee in honoring the memory of Myra Hyatt Kraft, who in her quiet, unassuming way reached out to countless thousands of individuals in need through her participation in, in support of a broad range of charitable endeavors through local, regional, national, and international agencies. Myra came to us in a partnership with her husband, Robert, and together with their four sons, Jonathan, Daniel, Josh, and David, have built a legacy that includes not only the league-leading New England Patriots, but the new Gillette Stadium and the highly acclaimed Patriots Place. So, many local and area charities have been welcomed to hold special events there, while others benefit from the support of the New England Patriots Charitable Trust through the donations of tickets, sports memorabilia, or the presence of team celebrities at charitable events, and the organization seeks to raise additional money to satisfy an even broader range of unmet needs. Individuals working with local Foxborough charitable initiatives have witnessed this time and time again, close and personal. Throughout the tireless efforts, Myra Hyatt Kraft has never been satisfied with a single role facilitator, but rather has been a tireless participant in the actual assessing of needs, embracing and receipt recipients, encouraging the volunteers, and striving to assure that most meaningful level of assistance to the most deserving for the benefit of all humankind. Throughout a lifetime of outreach and caring, Myra has been found to be an individual possessed with the enormous capacity of caring and a passionate inner drive to help make the world...
a better place for those who have lived and live hope far too long. While striving to fill, fulfill what has become her mission in life, Myra Hyatt Kraft has not only helped to make many individuals, families, and communities, she has also benefited countless organizations while not only assisting, but inspiring the volunteers who staff these agencies by reaching out to them with two simple words, asking them to follow me. Myra's left many still laboring in the vineyards of caring for others, and her untimely death has made even more determined to continue her legacy. We are very proud to honor her commitment, she is an inspiration to all of us this evening. From the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, to Robert Brew.
Thank you. WWII Veteran Committee, I didn't know you did such acts of kindness in the town of Foxborough, Selectmen and the citizens who are here for this. I think Myra would be embarrassed. And I think we've taken up too much of your time, I know you have important business. But her life was about acts of kindness, and building bridges, and doing the work and trying to lead by example. I am, I think one of the things she was most proud about was she was the first woman to lead the Boys and Girls Clubs of Boston that had men running it for 110 years.[734.69][734.69](laughter) She taught me a lot of things, and I think she taught the Boys and Girls Clubs a lot of things. And they take care of 15,000 young people, the same way the two of us have been embraced by the people of Foxborough. We feel very close to the community here. You welcomed us, and have been very kind to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more agenda item, if you could please be seated for one moment. Captain Tom Hudner, very rare, we get him down here, and we would like to, first of all, congratulate Mr. Kraft on a phenomenal season by the New England Patriots. We have one of the greatest coaches, I believe, in the history of football, and Bill Belichick, we all understand, would not be down here, he's preparing, working hard, preparing for a big, big game. But we have an award Captain Hudner would like to present to you, and at the appropriate time, would ask you, Mr. Kraft, to get this to Coach Belichick, but it's a relic from the US Naval Academy in Annapolis, and would like Captain Hudner to present it to you, and at the appropriate time that you could see fit to get it to the coach, Belichick, we appreciate it, we have it here, and we'd like to just unveil it. And this is a relic, a 1953 cleats from a special teams player down in Annapolis, and the award is named after Captain George Street, whom me and Captain Hudner served on the Executive Committee of the WWII Committee, and it's called "The Thundering Hooves of Annapolis." And the significance of, Tom, if you could come with Mr. Kraft, the significance of this trophy is that Mr. Belichick and Tom Hudner were Phillips Academy alumni, and they were also US Naval Academy, the coach, the coach's father was coached down there. And we named it after Captain Street, because our duty is to keep these heroes' names in the public eye, and we'd like Captain Hudner to present this to you, Mr. Kraft, to give to Coach Belichick at the proper time.[897.57][897.57](laughter)
I hope these thundering hooves of Annapolis are here two weeks from now.[919.62][919.62](laughter) I just left his office, and I will see this, see him tomorrow, and present it to him, and I know his dad coached there, and he feels very, a great fondness, I thank, I thank you, Brew, for all the kindness, and I think we've taken too much of these pieces of time. Thank you.
Wait a second, Robert, just wait, they're gonna, Robert, you're gonna leave.
Thank you, I'm sorry that you're all, I know Myra would have been embarrassed.[956.32][956.32](laughter)
Yeah, David, strike up the band. We're gonna step back, let these guys lead us out.
The board will take a 10-minute recess. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Welcome back to the Selectmen's meeting. We will now have citizens' input. If you come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Paul Boterelli, and my address is 12 Belcher Lane.
Okay, go ahead.
I live in Foxborough with my three children, I am presently unemployed, and I have a question tonight, in the interest of time, let me read it. On the issue of an open democratic town government, I have a question for Lorraine Brew. Ms. Brew, you've been very clear that you think the Selectmen have the collective wisdom to determine what's best for Foxborough, that Foxborough taxpayers should not hear the specifics of a proposal that could bring more than 15 million annually in revenues to Foxborough to improve schools, public safety, and care for seniors, and create thousands of construction and year-round jobs. Yet, your own website, in your own words, and I quote, states, "Selectmen should collaborate with citizens and others to formulate a vision for future of our town. Creative, forward-thinking approaches will be necessary to continually improve our town's viability," end quote. There seems to be a disconnect here, Lorraine. Is your website referring just to your own personal vision for development in Foxborough? We live, as you know, in a town of 17,000. Your website also declares that you are a strong advocate for, and I quote, "excellence in our public schools and a strong public safety services," end quote. And you don't even want us to hear about a proposal that might provide for this? I don't understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Again, state your name and address for the record.
My name is, my name is Daniel Flynn, I live at 400 Foxborough Boulevard, and I'm here to speak about my rights being violated on December 27th, my right to hear a proposal, and my right to possibly vote on one after it passes all the standards set forth by the Massachusetts Legislature. The presumption of law is that the Massachusetts Legislature has written and applied the statute correctly, and the Board of Selectmen has no right to violate that law, and it was violated on the 27th, or an attempt to violate it. And although Ms. Brew thinks that she has the right to vote for me, she does not, and the law states that clearly, and it's an act of deprivation of my rights and many other citizens. Because you acted in bias in favor of one group of citizens over another, and deprived those citizens of their rights under the law. You took an oath to uphold the Constitution and the statutes, and you violated them. Mr. DeVellis, I don't know how you get around a statute that's written, the only way is to rebut the presumption legally and lawfully, and I'm here to state for the record, it must cease and desist, or there will be action taken. Title 42, Section 1983, Deprivation of Rights Under Color of Law, is a statute that provides you, none of you, with immunity, okay? You don't get protected, and these rights are sacred to me, okay? If you voted five to nothing in favor of a casino, and never allowed the citizens to vote on it or hear it, it would be just as wrong. Maybe we should get a bunch of emails, and we won't have to have an election in May, because you think that you should be re-elected. I don't know, but I don't think Massachusetts would go for it, and I don't either. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Diana Griffin, 24 Mechanic Street. I've submitted a letter to the editor, but I, there's never a guarantee that the letters are published, and I felt it was appropriate to address the board and necessary. If anyone read last week's report regarding the town of Foxborough finances, it's a bit like reading Dickens', Dickens: A Tale of Two Cities. Is this the best of times or the worst of times for Foxborough? Well, it depends on whom you listen to and when they speak. Last spring, our town manager pushed for a meals tax on local business and restaurant patrons. He was quoted in The Globe as saying that Foxborough was desperate for new town revenue. I spoke out against this tax on behalf of the consumer and on business. Selectmen by a 3-2 vote passed a split-rate tax for business just weeks ago. Once again, we increased taxes on local business. Again, the rationale was to generate more needed revenue for the town, particularly in light of the reality of state and federal cutbacks in aid, and looming national and international financial challenges that threaten layoffs and cuts in services across the country. How is Foxborough any different? It's not. Selectman Harrington also wrote into the reporter noting that Foxborough has been taxed at the maximum for 14 years. With property taxes increasing well above inflation, water rates increasing at double digits, and millions borrowed for the Ahern School, the Public Safety Building, the high school, and library renovations and water projects, not to mention the upcoming Town Hall proposal. Long-term debt approximates $100 million, that's $6,000 for every Foxborough man, woman, and child, when you include underfunded retiree pension and healthcare costs. And now for the best of times in Foxborough. Some town officials, ironically those who are opposed to letting the public hear the specifics of a development proposal along Route 1 that could generate 15 million annually for the town, now insist that the town of Foxborough is in strong financial shape, that it doesn't need any more revenues, presumably revenues that could improve schools, enhance public safety, and care for our seniors. If that's all true, we shouldn't be exploring our options. Excuse the pun, it sounds like the town just hit the lottery. So is this the best of times, the worst of times, or somewhere in the middle? If we are so flush in town with cash, then let's repeal the split-rate tax, repeal the meals tax, and reject any revenues from the Commonwealth from the lottery commission that stems from perfectly legal gambling in town. Whatever the eventual direction, let's not take the road that rolls over the backs of our local businesses. I am concerned that our town management painted a prettier picture than the reality in an effort to avoid political turmoil. I'm confused by the many mixed messages communicated by our town officials and Mr. Pecos over town finances, and I'd like to ask Selectmen Walsh, DeVellis, and Brew to reconsider your vote on the split-rate tax and repeal the increased tax on our business, including the meals tax. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Seeing nobody else, the next item on the agenda is the liquor regulations. Police Chief O'Leary, would you come to the main table, please? And I'll ask Ms. Brew to, would you just start with a brief overview of those that maybe don't know, you've been working on this for almost a year now, a little bit of the history. Bob, you want to come up as well? I mean, Dave, I'm sorry, it's been a strange night. Would you just give them some history, so the folks at home understand where we are, why we are where we are today, and where we're gonna be going from here?
Sure, thanks.
Please, thank you.
Chief O'Leary, Dave Brown, and in the very beginning, our work included Paul Mortenson and I, we started to work on a review of the existing liquor license regulations. This had been identified as one of our goals by the Board of Selectmen, to revisit these, as they had not been reviewed in a really long period of time. And so, what we did as a group was we talked about, Ed had provided us some background in terms of how an area such as Patriot Place and Chestnut Green, which we view as, we call hospitality zones, how areas like that can impact and bring benefits to the town, but also wanted to look at it from a, the perspective of the liquor license aspect of it, what steps needed to be taken to make sure that we, in partnership with the businesses in those areas, could do, could make improvements to the existing rules and regulations. So, after we studied that type of zone, we went and each took different towns throughout the Commonwealth that had similar venues, you know, many restaurants, bars, entertainment centers, movie theaters, and we looked at the liquor license regulations for all of those different towns, and each of us, as we went through them, we brought forward different ideas to discuss as examples of what we thought might help enhance these regulations. After we put all of our thoughts together, we worked with town council, they took our comments and turned them into a draft set of adjustments to enhance the management under the Foxborough liquor regulations, and we presented that at a meeting that was attended by all of the licensees in the town. We went through all of the proposed changes at that time, and were given a lot of really good feedback by the businesses, and took that feedback, worked again on changing the regulations, worked again with town council, and then resubmitted those changes back out to the licensees. We have had a couple of, Chief O'Leary has actually had a number of discussions with representatives from Patriot Place, and they have provided us with feedback throughout representing many of the businesses up there. And most recently today, we have received another series of comments that, I have extra copies here, if anyone in the audience wants them.
Who is this from, Lorraine, it's not signed?
It was actually prepared on behalf of Patriot Place Group by an attorney, Peter Tam, after discussions that he and I had earlier yesterday concerning some of the regulations. The regulations that the board was provided with on Thursday as part of your packet, I had distributed to all the licensees in the community, so that they would have an opportunity again to see what we had come up with as a result of their input and the input of others, and also announcing the fact of having the meeting tonight, that these would be presented to the board, and so that the board, as a result of this, as Ms. Brew has pointed out, can see feedback, constructive feedback, that the board can take under consideration as we go forward in this process.
What I thought I would do is just run through the draft that you have in front of you, and just highlight some of the changes, and after we go through these, then I wanted to ask Chief O'Leary to go through the memo from Peter Tam and address, these are really the final specific comments that we are discussing at this point. So, just going through the draft, the first big change is really the addition of the definition section, and we have just provided a little bit more specific information on the definitions that you see listed here, defining alcoholic beverage, licensee, local licensing authority, official closing hour, opening hour, and then defining shot beer and wine. Under the general provisions section, we've gone from the original regulations that we have in place right now, have 21 items in them, we have done some adjustments to that, and now have 30. We have done some adjustments to that and now have thirty-nine listed. The highlights of these, I'll just go through for you. There are some additions. For example, item number five, which you will see addressed in Mr. Tam's memo later on. This was something that's in our current regs. We added the word substantive to the sentence so that it wouldn't just mean any little minor change to a physical alteration that was minor. So we added that word in there. We've added language about parking lots, no licensee, for example, in number eight. No licensee shall permit any disorder, disturbance, or illegality of any kind to take place in or upon the licensed premises, including without limitation, the parking lot in direct control of the licensee. We recognized, you know, in discussing with the businesses up at Patriot Place, for example, there are many parking lots that they don't have any direct control over, so certainly could never be held responsible for any problems that were out there. We go through, and if you look at item number fifteen, the original draft that we had actually discussed with you had a different number fifteen, and it included that the chief could obtain a list of all employees at any given time, and we had removed that on the request of the licensees, just because of the burden of what that would entail. And Chief O'Leary felt that if he needed that information, he would be able to get that from time card information from the licensees. So that was removed. We changed the wording in the current item number fifteen. This has to do with the requirement for tips team or safe service or any other chief of police-approved program for employees who are going to be serving alcohol, that they should be under the direct supervision of someone until such time that they are certified in one of these programs, and that that should occur within forty-five days of their employment. So we adjusted that to make it more workable for the businesses to handle, and then changed the recertification to... from two years to every three years. If you look at item number twenty, this is one item actually that we'll be talking about in reference to Mr. Tam's memo. And just as an example of the type of discussion that we were having, this talks about, it states, "No owner or on-duty employee of a licensee shall consume any alcoholic beverage during working hours, except where consumption of wine by a licensee's sommelier is specifically authorized by the local licensing authority." That had originally stated that there would be no alcoholic beverage consumed by an owner or on-duty employee, period. Certainly in discussing different situations up at Patriot Place, there is a restaurant that has a sommelier employed there, and so after discussion, that was inserted here. Since then, you know, we've had further discussion, suggestion to remove the word owner, which, you know, I think this is something that we would be looking for input from the board. Our intent of this was to ensure that if there was an owner acting as manager, that they would not be consuming any alcoholic beverage. However, we understand that an owner could be present and not be on the job, per se. So, you know, this is something that we'd be looking for feedback from the board on if they want to strike that word owner. Or we can clarify... You know, again, we can go back and clarify that.
Does Lorraine, just a question. So the way it's worded, if an owner of his or her own restaurant decided to entertain guests there and have dinner at their own restaurant...
That's the way this is correct.
This says they can't...
Correct.
The way it's worded, they couldn't have a drink in their own restaurant when they're not working.
Right. So we want to just clarify that so that it will state if the owner is the manager on site, that they would not be permitted to consume alcohol. We had some discussion around item number twenty-five, which talks about the different situations. For example, "No licensee or employee shall offer or deliver any free drink to any person or group of persons, deliver more than two drinks to one person at one time, offer to sell or deliver a drink at a price less than the price regularly charged, offer or deliver malt beverages or mixed drinks by the pitcher except to two or more persons, increase the volume of alcoholic beverages contained in a drink without increasing proportionately the price, and allowing any drinking game or contest that involves drinking or the awarding of drinks as prizes." We had some discussion about the item F, and again, we were not intending this to mean anything other than a drinking game. We're not talking about people playing pool and having an alcoholic beverage. We're talking about a game that involves alcohol itself. So, you know, different items like that were discussed as we reviewed these, and I think it was really helpful for us. So what I wanted to do was ask Chief O'Leary if he could go through his discussion that he had with Peter Tam regarding these last few items, and if we could discuss these actually more specifically to see if you have any concerns. And then after we discuss it, we can go back, do one final review, hopefully resubmit out to the licensees, and then come back for a final approval with our hope that we can do that sometime in February. Certainly, we want to give everyone out there a chance to get through the Super Bowl, so...
If I... If you could look at the proposal that I received today, and again, I had spoken with Mr. Tam representing the operations at Patriot Place, the definition of beer they have concern with because of the variety of size servings, and felt that a rewrite would be more appropriate during the last hour, such as the regulation that we had proposed about no sale of pitchers of beer or shots during the last hour prior to closing, that indeed, you know, beer sold greater than any twenty-two ounces of beer should not be held or not be done. They feel that they don't want an arbitrary provision of limitation. And as you saw in our article, the parties that have these odd-size beers could get an allowance through the office of the chief of police, that that would be allowed under our regulation. The second issue that I discussed with him had to do with the substantive changes, such as that there's a reconstruction that involves either capacity or emergency access, so that that is more spelled out than something just a vague word of what substantive changes could be. The third issue was a feeling that it was too broad because incidents can occur within a eating establishment that could not be prevented, and they feel that it would be better served if the emphasis was on prevention on the part of the licensee to prevent disturbances rather than to hold them accountable for disturbances that might occur that they have no control That relates to the Article Eight that we have submitted. Again, Lorraine has mentioned the fact of the owner issue that is of some concern, and also broaden it beyond sommelier, that is, you know, tasting wines, because we live in a more modern cooking environment in many restaurants where they're trying to do meal pairings with certain types of beer, and that the cooks are going to sample beyond the wine steward what is going to go well with different types of food. So as a result, they've asked for a broader definition that would allow food service preparers that in the process of developing menus have greater latitude in sampling. Noise, they particularly have an issue, such as the stadium, that receives a license from our Board of Selectmen to have concerts. And if the noise was bothersome at ten o'clock when Kenny Chesney is singing, that their liquor license could be in jeopardy. So the wording would be that if they receive some other type of license from the board that would allow the entertainment, that their liquor license not be in jeopardy. The penalties under number thirty-nine is something that the board had listed, and I believe it has been listed in previous regulations by the board. They just believe that it's too broad in terms of the authority of the board, and would ask for some regulation that would spell it out so that the people that are the licensees would know what types of behaviors would be regulated. And finally, the last section deals with the sanctions that are currently suggested as part of our process, that the so-called look-back, again, be limited to three years, believing that the prevention efforts on an ongoing basis by the part of the various licensees would be more effective than having something over their head for a longer period of time. So those were the different issues that we talked about, and as a result of the discussions is the document that was prepared and distributed to the board this evening.
Questions from board members? Mark?
The owner thing, I would think it kind of came right out at me. You own a restaurant, your family has a baby shower, a bridal shower or something. I just don't see that fitting into the equation.
Right.
I could definitely see if he was the owner acting as manager, absolutely, but maybe just acting manager, not owner, strike on it, because once in a while, I do make a function, and the owner's usually involved.
Right.
You know, so...
Yeah.
I would think that would be to strike that.
Yep. We agree with that.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
James?
Just kind of on a broad sense. I like the process that went through. Dave, I know you're quiet here, but I know you spent a lot of time on it. You guys are working in the best interests of the people and the residents. I mean, thirty-nine, forty items in a new regulation is a lot. I would expect that this process went through, the establishment owners as well, you guys worked together, and I would expect that there'd be some pushback. So what we got today was some pushback. I guess I would also expect that this would go back into here. You'd review these back with your committee. And, you know, where you can make accommodations without sacrificing the intent, do so, if not stand by what you initially came with. When I see words like, you know, "Some of this is unnecessary and counterproductive", look at it. If it is unnecessary and counterproductive, evaluate it. If you don't think it is, keep it in here. But you'll go through that back and forth. But I don't have any specific comments. The comments that I had last time, it looked like they were addressed, you know, going and getting too much information from workers. You took that out. There was another section in there last time, I think, of giving the Board of Selectmen more authority to number or to evaluate how many patrons can come in there, which I wasn't comfortable with because it took away the authority of the building inspector. So I think you took that out as well. But overall, I think it's very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Linda?
Just looking at it earlier, I was just questioning the noise thing because I thought of the concerts up at the stadium. And, you know, then there's, you know, you're at somebody's wedding, and, you know, it's eleven-thirty at night, and you're, you know, the band is still playing, and I just was a little concerned about that. And the people that are waiting in line...
Mm-hmm.
Can you just kind of go through your thought process on that for me?
Which numbers?
Thirty-four.
Okay. "Licensees who permit persons to wait in line for a table, a seat, or entrance to the premises must enforce the following rules. Persons who wait inside the premises must be kept in an orderly line and must not be permitted to block fire aisles or exits. An employee of the licensee must supervise persons who are permitted to wait in line outside the premises. The employee must stand outside with the line at all times, and person waiting outside must not block the public way or ramps for accessibility. Persons in line shall be denied admission if they are being loud or disorderly or causing noise or other problems for residents of the area." So, for example, item C would only apply to certain locations that are within proximity of homes, but items A and B are really meant to keep control of the people who are outside and, you know, just keep an orderly and safe presence as they're waiting to go in, you know. Any other?
No, I think that addresses it because I think the regulation really wasn't spelled out clearly, that it's the responsibility of the licensee to control his potential customers in a suitable fashion so they don't cause disruption for others or put others at risk.
Right. Anything else, Linda?
No, those are the two that I just...
All right.
You know, I think Jimmy is right. I think you should do exactly what we should try, take the rebuttal, have them sort it out again, meet again. I think that's...
Well, if I could interject, Mr. Sullivan, I would actually appreciate that the board members, whether Ms. Brew or myself, for you, and I know you have a lot of reading to do anyway, but if you see something specific as a result of either the information provided by the licensees or from your own thoughts, so that we could incorporate those as well.
Okay.
So if you would take the time, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think the process has worked pretty well. There's been lots of input from the public, from the restaurants. I think Mr. Tam raises some interesting points and some not-so-interesting points. So I think we should all go through, give the feedback back to the committee, and then have you come back with kind of a final set of draft. Go ahead, sir.
First of all, I was really glad to see how closely you mirrored Chapter 138 doing these. Most of the wording is verbatim, so that was a huge comfort to me since I'm the one that's reviewing these applications when they come in. I think my only concern would be number five. My understanding is, from my discussions with Attorney Kelly at the ABCC, that any change of premise wording that's on the license, any change from the original plan that was submitted with the license, is a change of premise, and that even includes if you move a doorway, if you take down a half a wall. So I really think that, you know, that needs to be tight. You know, and I'm happy to work with you on that, Lorraine, if you'd like, but it's been an issue in the past, and, you know, we really... There's a reason for that description of the premises being on that license, because that is the exact location where people are allowed to serve, store, you know, alcohol. So it really, you know, comes into regulations and enforcement for the police department. So I think, you know, that really needs to stay tight on that one.
It's interesting because the original regulation didn't even have the word substantive in there, and then since then, we've been discussing what does substantive mean.
Right.
Perhaps it's not even applicable.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, Sandy, when... Because this is of interest to me, this latest comment, when they say substantive changes, because we're talking about physical changes here.
Right.
But what if they were going to change the use in the sense of the, you know, maybe they're going to introduce entertainment where they didn't have it before?
Then that's an entertainment license that goes along... There's a specific license for entertainment... for entertainment.
Which they have to get, but they've also changed in.
Yeah, unless, yeah, that really doesn't affect the liquor license. It only affects the liquor license inasmuch as there's a specific entertainment license that goes along with the liquor license, and they need to mirror each other as far as, again, description on them.
What if they added like a dance floor? Now that's something physical.
Not really. That really isn't an issue. Yeah, it would be like putting up a different light fixture, that type of thing. It's more if you change a wall, if you move a bar, if you change, especially if you change egresses, or those things are really important because it not only comes in, you know, liquor licenses have to coincide with fire regulations. So, you know, because of things that have happened in the past and some of the tragedies we've had, you know, that really comes into play now. So that's why these are really important.
Any other comments?
Just a broad question. I don't want to rush just for the sense of rushing, and we're almost there. What's the deadline that you guys are trying to reach with respect to?
December.
So we're overdue. I didn't know if we're trying to get something.
I was told this was like about a three-month project last March.
Welcome. I didn't know if we're shooting for May, a specific deadline.
We were hoping sometime in February. We hope we could work on this and then give, you know, the licensees time to review the final set and then bring forward to have a vote.
Seeing that said, and we've just signed all the licenses for two thousand and twelve, the board, one we do vote on, you know, the final chapter here, is that okay to do that, chief, during the middle of, you know, licensing? I didn't know if it would have to take place as one thirteen, you know? I'm just asking the question. I don't know the.
The board has the authority to amend and adopt new regulations at any time. Unfortunately, due to, you know, time constraints, it's been a much longer time period to bring forward our work product to the board for final approval.
But you've used a lot of that time to make sure that all of those businesses that would be impacted have seen the drafts, have had input in the drafts, so that you've made it a collaborative effort, which is important. Rather than it take a little longer, be collaborative, and we all agree to move forward in the right direction than to be arguing back and forth. So, okay. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Randy and Roger will ask you to join us. And this item is solid waste collection program changes. Roger, I'd mention one thing to you since you're so new. We've shared this before, and I recognize from reading the newspaper that some changes happened kind of quickly, and you folks weren't aware of them. But whether it's snow plowing, or trash, or anything that, just from your standpoint, the board likes to know of problems before the phones start ringing at our homes. And in this particular case, you know, I didn't have an answer. So I know you guys were taken pretty short on this, but since you're new, just would drive home with you that the board likes to get a quick email or a quick phone call, just a heads up that all of a sudden, the trash, you know, because we, for instance, if you look at the, what I read in the paper, and Mr. Sullivan has many times commended the prior company, the prior employees, they knew the town. When we had the first hurricane, we brought, they agreed to come in for an extra Saturday, do everything we needed to do. So there's a whole lot of relationship there, and then all of a sudden to read like they're not there and everything's changed and people, trash didn't get picked up and phone calls start ringing, and it was just kind of a shock, I think, to many folks here on the board on this side. So while you were dealing with that crisis, I'm sure you were trying to solve the issue. But in the future, if you could just give us a quick email or heads up, it would be helpful. So we know what to tell people when they're calling us. It's easier than telling them to call you. All right? So go ahead, folks.
Very good. Thank you. Why don't we introduce, you know, who we have here? From Waste Management here, the new operators of the solid waste program for the town, Matt.
Matt Bryce.
Matt Bryce and Don.
Don Davis.
Don Davis. And there are contacts, and they manage the program for us. We also have in the background here is Mike Alvin, formerly of American Waste. They were the company that sold to Waste Management, and Mike is consultant for Waste Management and has actually been working with us to try to, you know, correct any of the issues that have come up. In summary, I know you all have the information in your packets, and we publish it in the paper and it's been on the website, but very briefly, there was a change in ownership of the trash program. We've had American Waste for twelve and a half years in the town. You know, people have been, you know, by many reports, very satisfied, you know, with American Waste. We've had very few problems, they're very responsive, and people have been very used to the schedule and the practices of American Waste. So we were aware that American Waste was selling to Waste Management. We just weren't aware of the exact date of the change. So the change happened quickly, you know, by surprise. They started January first of this year. They were preparing in the background, you know, Waste Management was, you know, working with the employees to transition them to, you know, to the Waste Management way of doing things. And so they started on January first, and they started doing things differently than American Waste did it. Primarily, they have a, they have a practice, you know, whereby they only collect on the right-hand side of the street. So whereas before you may have seen the American Waste truck go by and they collected on both sides, and, you know, you saw your trash getting picked up, whereas now with Waste Management, for safety reasons, they don't allow that to happen, and that's something certainly we don't have an issue with. But now the resident will see trash being picked up on one side of the street, and because of the routing, they may not see that truck come by and pick up their trash on their side of the street, you know, till, you know, later in the day. So that was a change. There was also change in personnel, you know, so there was familiarity issues, you know, out of the gate, and then there were also, you know, with the routes and the streets, and there were also, they started with a different route configuration. Same trash day for everyone. People's trash day didn't change, although they maybe, maybe they thought it did. Trash day didn't change, but the route sequencing changed. And so that created issues for some folks, whereas even though it's always been the rule that the trash and your recycling has to be out on the street by seven AM in order for it to be picked up, but because of the schedule that people have been, you know, used to for many years, you know, had now changed, and so maybe they thought, geez, they don't come around my street till twelve o'clock, I have until that to get my trash out, but now maybe they came earlier and the trash wasn't out, so it created some problems. So it's an important thing that we want to emphasize is that the trash definitely needs to be out, you know, by seven AM. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Don or Matt, but I think you guys have tried to go back to the, at least the starting point of the schedule that we've had, but given the routing that you're just on the right-hand side of the street, you really can't stick to that because that wouldn't allow you to go back down the, you know, the left side right away. So there are those changes. There are also some safety changes. You'll see folks, you know, wearing the, you know, some safety gear, hat, and, you know, visible vests and snow guards on the sides of the trucks so people who pass, you know, won't maybe get so close. So those are some changes, and we've, we've been through the revenue office, through Lisa's office, you know, we take the calls from the residents, you know, if there's an issue. So we certainly have been fielding, you know, many more of them over the last, you know, the last three weeks, and we've been instructing them of the changes. Waste Management has been working, has been showing a lot of goodwill to try to, you know, do extra to correct the issue. So if we get a phone call from somebody who says, geez, they didn't pick up my trash, and maybe the trash wasn't out on time, they're going back to get it. So that, you know, they're doing, they really are working hard, and Mike is working hard with us as well out in the field to try to manage, manage the transition. I think that's the high view. I don't know if Roger or Matt or Don, you guys had anything else you want to talk about?
There's a couple of technology changes. They have a laptop computer in the truck now, and what they do is as they go by to pick up solid waste, if the trash is not out, they'll note that on the computer instantly. And they send those to Lisa and me at the end of the day. So if we get a call from a resident that says their trash wasn't picked up, we can tell right away whether it was out on time or not out on time. We can tell whether it had a tag on it or it didn't have a tag on it, or whether there was a bag out there that didn't have a tag on it. So in the long run, it's going to work out better, but in the short run, we've got to get the people used to this. They've got to, they've got to become conditioned to the new systems.
How come, just from a business standpoint, you buy someone's business and you don't notify the community of all these changes? I mean, wouldn't there be, I would think, you buy someone's business, you understand the way that they do things, you do things differently, and it seemed like lots of people were caught by surprise. You guys just kind of bought the business, made the changes, and why wouldn't you have sat down with the town and said, here's a list of the way they do things, here's a list of the way we do things, here's what we're going to change, here's when we're going to change them? How best do you think we communicate to the folks? It just seemed to be a disconnected approach in working with the town. Am I wrong, or?
Yeah, I guess I would have to probably ask Mike. He was more in tune to what the changes were and to when the time, the timing of everything was going to happen. We just, we operate the local site that handles the trucks that come out to service, you know, the town of Foxborough, but Mike, being the former owner of AWS, would have more knowledge of, you know, how that transition went down and what the timing was and, you know, the stuff behind it.
Well, I guess, let me just say I disagree with you. You bought the business. He sold the business. You want to keep the business. He's not going to care in a year or two whether you have the business or not. And so relationships are pretty important, and he certainly knows, we've had a great relationship over the last number of years. And it just seems to me as a lesson, you know, Waste Management is a pretty large corporation, pretty large company. I'm sure he's not the first business you've bought in the last year or two. It just, I'd like you to take back as a lesson learned to your own company. That, you know, other communities aren't going to put up with this either, and it was very frustrating for our folks. And we had actually talked a number of months ago about the fact that this contract would go out to bid soon.
Correct.
And, you know, there was some hesitation because the service was so good, we were so pleased with it and everything else, but we felt obligated after a long period of time to put it out to bid. And, you know, that's going to be one of the factors we'll take into consideration when we put it out to bid.
I do apologize, you know, to the board and to, you know, the town for any of the, you know, the inconveniences that have been caused because of the transition, but I can guarantee you that we're in tune with Randy and with Roger and with the town in making this better, making it right, getting it back to that point where AWS had it. I mean, our goal is to have a hundred percent of our customers satisfied, and while this transition has been bumpy, it's been bumpy for us, and, you know, really, we're not even looking at us, we're just trying to get everything we can, all the resources out to you guys to make sure that we're trying to get up to that level that you guys are expecting from us.
What happened to the former employees who knew everything about the town?
One of them is still here. One resigned the first week. The trash driver resigned the first week.
Joe, the trash guy?
Yeah. So that was part of the learning curve, too. You know, I'm not trying to make excuses, but, you know.
But the one that's still stayed, that's still employed with you, why is he not working in town?
He is working in town.
He is working in town.
Yep, absolutely.
He completes his training today, and will be back in the truck tomorrow. We have a seven-day training period for new hires to get them used to our way of doing business and to understand our safety rules and our rules and stuff. So he actually completed his training today. Will be back on the truck tomorrow.
Okay. Linda, any questions, comments?
Just, so, you know, I just went through this myself with a company that had bought out my company, and.
Linda, you want to use the microphone?
Oh, yeah. I'm on. Hi. And my client was upset at the fact that the old company hadn't given the client, you know, anything, any heads up on, you know, hey, we're thinking of merging with somebody or anything. And then the next thing they know is, you know, their materials are getting shifted, you know, twenty miles away. So I, I, I'm living what you guys are going through right now, and there is something to be said for a client and, you know, the fact that, you know, maybe not necessarily that this town wanted to go with Waste Management. You know, we, as we have already said, you know, we're very happy with everything that Waste Management, American Waste has done for us. And, you know, it is coming up for bid again, and just as my client will be probably going up for bid for someone to do their printing, you know, those things will come into play. So, you know, you just want to take care of your clients as best you can and get them educated really quick on what you perceive, how you can make things better. And I just, you know, you guys did do a great job, but, you know, maybe a little heads up to us, you know, we're shopping around or something, you know, would have been, would have been nice, but I can't say anything wrong for all the things you did for us. You helped us with the storm. You really came through when we really needed you, so I appreciate it, and I hope that you folks will, will take a lesson from him, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
During the transition, Waste had agreed to hire our employees. So in fairness to them, I thought because our employees are going to be in town, they've been doing it for twelve years, it should be a smooth transition. Three days into it, Joe, for whatever reason, I haven't even talked to him, didn't want to work anymore. I know for his, you know, he does his things his way. And that kind of threw a wrench into it. I anticipated a smooth transition going forward because it's my guys, you know, same trucks. So in fairness to these guys, they were hit with that. Not an excuse, but it's a reality. So I did expect a smoother transition because my guys know what, you know, they know the, you know, the ins and outs of the town.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
That's helpful to know, and, but I think what you're saying is important, that you are working to figure out the expectations and meet those needs, so I wish you luck with that.
Thank you.
Jim?
No, I don't want to be repetitive. I agree with Linda and Lorraine. The only thing I'd like to add is, you know, years ago, the town made a decision to not make this process part of the taxes that we pay. So you're going to see people, if you haven't seen it already, they pay for this every week. So it comes out of my pocket, it goes to the convenience store, they give me the sticker, and I see the stickers go every day, so it's painful when a sticker gets lost or what have you. So when there was a shakeup in this, you probably got a hundred calls because people are paying attention and it's, and I also talked to Randy, and you had told me that people were calling when they found out the switch, trying to find Joe, the truck driver's address, so they can send him a Christmas present. I'm not one for bigger is better with contracts and businesses, so I wish you luck. That's a big company that bought a small company. I think people were happy with the small company, but I definitely want to see this go out to bid. The more the better, and I wish you luck, but it didn't start off on the right foot, and I hope you can catch up and give the people, myself included, I think everyone here has a house that we put stickers on, I think what we had before, and then better. And then, when is that contract up? Up in June?
It's up the end of June, and I think the board knows because the town manager, I think, has updated the board, but he's already working on the RFP. He's got Kevin from the Board of Health, you know, spearheading that, so, you know, that's in process, and I expect he's going to be bringing that back to the board, you know, in the next couple of months.
Right, okay. And so you're working under the exact contract that American Waste had before? And then just to add a little bit, when we had the power outage, I think you did step up. Mike, and you gave us a lot of help when we needed on those, on that hot day to take everybody's trash. It was a discounted rate, so I'm sure that was garbage. Yeah, and I'm sure that was not in your contract, so.
The service you want to provide.
Yeah, so just be cognizant of that, please. Thank you.
You know, it's, it's really troublesome to be blindsided up here like this. Somebody calls me on the phone, and I say, I don't know what you're talking about. It's really embarrassing. And then I, I thought it was a joke. And then I was home, my trash and recycle's first thing on Monday morning, I hate it because it's Sunday night, you know? You want to change it to Tuesday, I love you.
That's my day. That's my day, too bad.
Used to be mine.
Too bad.
So, so I went up there, the kids didn't bring in the trash barrels. I'm like, all right, I'll get them when they get home, and then I go up there and they're full, and then I said, all right, must be running late or something, and then I was pulling on my driveway and up came the truck, and I saw it wasn't your truck, Mike. And I, first thing, I waved to Joe, and we get a personal relationship with Joe. A lot of people in town did. And we, I'm serious, I'm kind of bummed they didn't get to say goodbye to him either. So, you know, I like you to forward his address to the Board of Selectmen or some contact information so I can thank him, I mean, it'd be, I mean, I remember. information so I can thank him. I mean, every year, I mean, I remember one Christmas, he didn't get his card and I chased him down through the highway department, the side of the road. So, I mean, it was, not that I don't invite new business into town, but it just troubled me.
Sure.
You know, so, and not just this, but any situation, we don't like being blindsided because it's definitely embarrassing. So, good luck to you. You know, these guys are going to be a hard act to follow. I mean, they put the can right down, they didn't throw it through the yard, there was no trash left on the ground, there's nothing blown out of the trucks. You know, good luck following that act because it was number one. I never wanted to put it out to bid because I thought it was a big waste of time. Because a lot of times you can ask for more, pay less and get less. And I couldn't see doing better than what we had. So, good luck to you, Mike. And good luck to you, gentlemen.
Well, I think I'd just outclose by saying that, you know, people talk about the importance of the personal part of business, but they usually don't include trash when they talk about that. But you had a business where the people that worked for you had a personal relationship with everybody in town. And people felt connected. They didn't feel like it was a trash company. They felt that these were fellow people working together. And if you folks don't have that kind of a mindset, it's going to be very difficult to keep the business. And you bid, I'm sure the price you paid assumes you're going to maintain business. You didn't buy something you're going to lose. So while you're trying to train his people on your way of doing things, I think you ought to listen to him and he ought to help train you on how to do the business. Because he know how to run a business, he know how to run a very successful business in small communities. So I hope you're not too big to learn lessons from him and the business that he put together.
If I could, one more thing. Maybe it's worth reaching out to Joe. You know, I know when a transition, like when we spoke about, it's very difficult to lose an old personal friend and a boss and move into a different thing. Some people get a little stubborn. Maybe he just had a bad week. Maybe reach out to him and say, hey, maybe we can do it. I mean, because I know if you're setting your way. So I don't like kids coming onto my job and telling me how to do something different either because I've done every different way there is possible. Maybe he just had a bad week. Maybe reach out to him because, you know, he meant a lot to people in this town. A lot more than people, I mean to people, that's for sure. So...
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on the agenda is an executive session for non-union bargaining. Not to come back into open session other than to adjourn.
Someone?
I'm sorry, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a question mark. Go ahead.
Should we be doing this with our town manager here?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only question.
I'll poll the board. Linda?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And chairman says yes, okay. And I've said to Sandy that she doesn't need to sit through that either, so she can leave. Thank you very much for stepping in tonight.
Give that to Kevin.
And thank you for coordinating. This event this evening took a lot of coordination, as you saw. And Sandy did lots of things to, including getting the whole meeting set, the whole room set up and having someone come in in the morning and have changed everything she did the night before and having to redo it again. So there's a lot of unintended consequences that made it harder for her. So we thank her for all that. Okay?
Thanks, Sandy.
So...
Well, who's going to update us in a few?
Do we, do we meet again before the Super Bowl?
We meet next Tuesday.
Yeah, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, there are four. Yeah, so we're going to have to think of what we're going to do.
Remember the last Super Bowl with the Giants?
Yeah, you're going to take a ride to Indy. No, they're going to come here.
Are you all set, Frank?
You're still on, you guys, in time.
No, we're done.
We're done.